All right. We will now call the City Council's special meeting to order for November the eighteenth, five thirty P.M. Please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. The invocation be given by Councilman Jim Bernard.
All right, let's bow our heads and let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, thank you so much for your love and your kindness, and also thank you for your grace. Please be with us tonight as we go about the city's business and make sure that we do it according to your will, not our will, dear Lord. Please look after our children, keep them safe going to school and back, especially with the holidays coming up, and look after our military people, as I'm sure that some of them will be coming home for the holidays and traveling. And just be with us and keep us safe, and you know, especially those that couldn't make it tonight, and keep them healthy, and just be with us throughout the night, and we do this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Here.
Councilmember Spurlock? Councilmember Sutherland?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bernard, I'm sorry, Councilmember Bernard?
I'm still here.
Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum.
All right, first thing up was to appoint the deputy mayor. This conversation came up at our last meeting. It was discussed at that meeting that we would wait until we had a full council. Is that still the sentiment of the council?
It is for me.
It is for me, too.
All right. That's what we will do. Moving on to item number five, we have the Boys and Girls Club. Dave is not here. There is a local sports team that was wanting to use the facilities. Do we have any information on that?
I might have a little bit of it, since I sit on that board. It's an organization, they are for-profit, and they want to use the interior of the rec center for seven days. I don't know if they're consecutive days or not. And what Mr. Cornet wanted to discuss with you all was, he has a contract with, I say with us, he has a contract where they're supposed to stay for events and things, but this is after hours, and his staff usually goes home by five-thirty or so. So what they wanted to do was make sure that someone was there from the boys and girls to kind of monitor what's going on inside, and you know, making sure people don't do what they're not supposed to be doing. And at the same time, ensure that there might be some security, because they plan on, the group that wants to come in wants to charge to come in three or five dollars a person. So Jerry's not here, I don't know what the ramifications are in getting some private business going in there and making money off of it.
Do you know what the timeline was?
It's December-ish, like the beginning of December, so it's right around the corner.
Yeah, that would definitely be something you'd want to clear with Jerry.
Yeah. So, I mean, if the city manager wants to go ahead and call Da- I'm sorry, Jerry, and just kind of get a feel for that, but I mean, would we want to have a for-profit business? They have an age group that's between high school and twenty-three, twenty-four. It's the same type of setup as the Heartland Lions, which is that other football team that comes, but they're nonprofit. So the only difference is, this is kind of a regional, it almost looks like a national organization that does this kind of thing, so...
Why would they, I mean, are they unwilling to provide security?
Oh, they would have to pay for that. I mean, what I'm getting at is, if someone went in there, if, you know, you have a lot of testosterone in there, and one would think that you would want to have some level of security in there, and one employee from the Boys and Girls Club may not be sufficient for that, you know? So what Mr. Cornet was going to ask was, you know, do you want them to go ahead and ensure that security's there? Would Jerry have to create a contract for this organization that's going to make money, and are we going to spend our money having Jerry do that?
Yeah.
So I'm of the opinion that if they're going to be charging, and they are for-profit, then they should be paying their way the whole way through.
There you go. I agree.
So, I mean, I don't object to for-profit companies or businesses using city parks and things, but they still have to have the insurance and the security and everything else.
Was this a nighttime event?
Nighttime, it would be Fridays and Saturdays.
He said something about, for like, seven games?
Seven games, yeah.
There's nobody here representing that, right?
Well, he probably thought it was a six P.M. meeting.
Well, we can table this until the end of the meeting, and we can table it indefinitely, and then take it up at a later meeting if he doesn't show up.
Okay.
I can text him and see if he's coming. I mean, I know him, so like I said, I'm on the board as well, so let me just go ahead and do that.
Sure. We'll go ahead and move on while we're waiting on that. Under staff updates, we have a budget amendment. Danielle?
Uh, this is the amendment to move the funds that were not used for the purchase of the small garbage truck to contingency for...
I can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
No.
Yeah, the mics aren't really turned up very loud tonight.
Can you hear me on this one?
Better.
Better.
Okay. Uh, this is a budget amendment for the remaining funds in, for the remaining funds after the purchase of the small garbage truck to be moved into contingency for possible future use with council's permission.
Okay. Anyone in carry to make that motion?
And just to clarify, that it goes into contingency, it's not to be presumed that that money is going to be for other equipment other than contingency, and if anyone wants to spend it, they have to come to council for it?
Correct.
Okay.
Is anyone willing to make that motion?
I motion that we approve the budget amendment as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions?
I just have a question. Where did we come up with that figure for decrease the amount on the, for the truck? So we only need half the money?
At the last meeting, the discussion for approval of the purchase of a small garbage truck was in the amount of a hundred thousand...
A hundred thousand, seven hundred.
Oh, so we had two hundred thousand in the budget, we only needed about that?
Yes, they projected two hundred thousand for the purchase of the truck, and they didn't use the full amount, so the remaining balances being moved in, into contingency.
So was that truck ordered as of the last meeting?
Um, it's coming up on the next agenda item.
Okay, thank you. I'm good.
Okay, any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Councilman Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you. Item number seven, we have the small sanitation truck information. Kim?
Yes, they had gotten the Public Works Department, wanted to get the small sanitation truck, because it can get in and out of smaller areas. They had put two hundred thousand dollars in the budget, and only are spending one hundred thousand, seven hundred for the truck. And there, the other, the rest of it is ninety-nine thousand some odd dollars was going to be put into contingency, like Danielle had said. And they said that they really need the truck, they wanted the rest of the money to stay in their budget until the end of the year, in case they needed something else, and...
Well, I mean, the money's there, it's just in contingency.
Right, and Ronnie said that they need a couple of F-150s, but you know, I mean, they didn't ask for that in the budget, so...
But those were also budgeted. I mean, there were other trucks in the budget, there was a heavy-duty truck that was budgeted in here, so they want more trucks on top of that?
That's what he said, because one of his people are driving their own truck, because they don't have enough vehicles, and he's driving his own truck. But we let them take the Escape that was sitting out here not being used, but they need, they need pickups, is what he said. So, he said he was hoping to get two F-150s with the rest of that money, so...
Well, I mean, with it in contingency, obviously they can request some counsel that we purchase those, so...
But I just needed to see if council wants to make a motion to allow them to get this small sanitation truck, or not.
Oh, the truck, the small sanitation?
The one that's in the budget.
I thought we already did that.
No.
No, because the amount...
You did the money part.
The money was approved, but the truck itself is not...
We had questions about it at the last meeting, that's why we're bringing it again.
Yeah.
Is anyone willing to make a motion to purchase that small sanitation truck?
I move that we allow the sanitation department to purchase the small sanitation truck as was budgeted for...
No, as budget adjustment. What was it, a hundred thousand, seven?
Hundred thousand, seven hundred.
Hundred thousand, seven hundred.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further questions on it? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you. Item number eight, we have the change order for North Utility Extension. Kim, it's you again.
Yeah, Ronnie had sent over a letter of recommendation for this change order. It's the first change order for the contractor. He explained to me in great detail about what the situation was, and Mr. Cool might even be able to elaborate on that a little bit, too, but the line that they're putting in, the water line that they're going to put in, that's going to go up to the new development up there, Nucor. The water line is going to need what's called restraints put on it in different areas, because of the sugar sand and stuff that is going to be in nothing, is going to be able to pack around it, which is going to leave it kind of loose, and if anything, you know, any pressure or anything was to pop it, it's going to blow it all the way out the end of that, that line. So they were talking about, he was talking about, this change order is to add more restraints to the water line. They're called bell restraints, and they will make it a stronger line, so that no matter what, the line isn't going to blow apart at the end. And that's about as much as I can explain of it.
Do we have further questions on that?
I do. Isn't there a, I mean, was it in the, Carl, I'm not sure, can I ask you the question?
You can ask me, I'll try to answer.
All right, so you're the C.E.I. for the project, right?
No.
You're the C.E.I. for the project, are you not?
Yes, I am.
This is Carl Cool of Cool and Cobb Engineer.
So isn't there in the engineering work, aren't they supposed to do soil samples and soil studies and stuff? I mean, isn't that something that the engineer would have been in there, or the contractor at some point doing soil samples? I don't have the contract in front of me, but isn't that typical of this type of work?
The soil samples were taken, they were used by the designing engineer to design the water mains and force mains, and the engineer that designed it, designed it with some pipe restraints, which is a metal clamp that goes on both sides of the pipe, keeps the pipe from coming apart. And they designed some restraints. As for at a valve, they called out to have restraints back at twenty feet. Your staff, and I talked to three of your staff, and I'm in agreement with it, believe that it's better to put restraints not twenty feet from the valve, but a hundred feet more, a hundred feet, not a hun- a total hundred feet from each side of the valve, because if you have to take a valve out, and you have restraints back twenty feet, there's a huge amount of pressures, thousands of pounds of force pushing against that valve. If you have to take a valve out, and if you don't have those restraints, then the blunt line could blow out, and you've got a huge, huge mess, because the pipe came loose. Now, when the pipe is in the ground, laying there, you don't need restraints very much at all. It's only when you have to do maintenance work. So Ronnie called the designing engineer, talked about it. The designing engineer felt like it was okay, like they had designed, we just want restraints out twenty feet, and it is until you have to do maintenance work. And your staff have had bad experiences of taking, of having to take a valve out and replace a valve, and a big, big line blowout occurred, because the pipes were not connected good enough together for a distance back. So it's your staff, and it's my recommendation that you have the contractor put these clamps for a hundred feet each side of every valve. And that's, that's what we're talking about now, additional cost for the clamps that hold the pipe together.
I was just asking, because I know that this is a grant-funded project, and it's based off of the money that we already have. So now this is going to be an expense that the city's going to have to incur, because the grant will not reimburse it. I just didn't know if this...
Your grant money is not going to cover, you're having to pay some money already.
Right.
So any overage, you'll pay.
Right, so my point is, if this was a foreseeable instance, you know, could it have been something? I don't know, I mean, it's water under the bridge.
It's a foreseeable issue, it boils down to a honest difference of opinion between the designing engineer and the City of Avon Park staff.
And you concur with the City of Avon Park staff?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And you'll oversee it, then, at this point, so does the...
We've been monitoring it, and they've been putting these, these restraints in where they've been directed to put them in.
So does your C.E.I. increase with this increase as well?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Ours is a fixed rate, ours is that, so we don't go up.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions?
I just have a question for Kim. At the last meeting, we had talked about seeing exactly how much is going to be coming out of the grants versus what the city has paid for. I know that there were some expenses done prior to the grant being submitted or approved that I think are going to be part of the grant in the end. Are we going to get, do you think, some kind of a spreadsheet that shows us exactly how much money the city is putting out, because this sixty-three was not budgeted?
Right, yes, we can, we can do a spreadsheet on that. And for the seven hundred and twenty thousand dollar grant, Ronnie's giving me the scope of work for that one this week.
Did that one come in, was it, was it approved?
It's approved.
Okay, but we haven't signed off on it yet?
No, it's, no, because he has to, he has to provide me with the scope of work, and I have to send it to them, and then they will go from there.
So the money...
It's been approved, but they need the scope of work.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's just like the first grant, where they need the scope of work? And then after that, are they going to require the plans as well?
I don't know. I'll ask him if he thinks they are.
So I'm just wondering, would these plans have to be amended, or as built, or something to include in the next plans that have to be submitted for the second grant, so that maybe they would cover it?
The second grant, there's no change in plans.
Okay.
The second grant is for more money to pay for the project. But when you get the second grant, you still don't have enough money.
Right.
Right, right, right.
I just didn't know if maybe there was a way to get more.
You've got some city, city skin in this game.
Yeah, and it's going to be for some reimbursements to the city and stuff like that, but it won't cover it all.
And that's the number that I think that we need to find out, is exactly what the city did pay?
Okay.
Or will pay, yeah. And it's not over yet, so it might be even more money later on.
Right. Okay. Any further questions?
As a last question, do you know there was a contract that was supposed to be done between Nucor and the city?
Yes, and they're still waiting on Kim Lee Horn on that one, and Jerry is waiting on it as well, so he's involved, Jerry Beer. But they're waiting on that for right now, to get everything ratified and set up, so that it can be ready for signature. So it's not ready yet.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions?
No, I'd just like to make one comment on this change order, the fact that it was approved by Ronnie Jones. As most of us know, that he turned in his letter of resignation, and that makes me very concerned for the city's protection, knowing that we do not have somebody in place to look over these change orders, and I have a feeling that if we don't have anybody who's the director of infrastructure, we're going to be, end up getting a lot more change orders on a regular basis, without having necessarily having somebody give us their opinion. So I'll just let you know upfront, that I'm going to probably contact Mr. Jones to see if there's some way we could convince him to stay on longer, because I think we definitely need a protection through this project. And somebody might disagree with me, but I know one thing, I don't want to make a decision on whether a change order gets passed or not, without having some professional person telling me, and I think Ryan Jones was that person.
Wait, is it Mr.?
Is there anything else on the change order?
Yes, as far as the change order and everything else that's already in the works with the Public Works Department, Mr. Cool said that he would be available to take care of it. He's already our consultant anyways, and because it's an emergency situation, we can go ahead and, because our procurement policy allows us to go ahead and choose somebody without having to go to bed, so I would suggest that that's what we do.
Okay.
And, and put him in, in place, and he, and Mr. Cool can explain how that process of work.
And he's already the C.E.I. anyway.
Yeah, he already, he already works for us anyway, so...
Okay.
And he's also been a Public Works Director.
So Kim, what are you saying, is that you've already got it covered?
Kind of, sort of.
Okay.
But that's only on this project, correct?
No, it's for all of the projects. Ronnie's got a whiteboard at his office, which I did take a picture of.
Nobody made one.
There's a lot of projects on there, including Wawa, which is almost wrapped up.
Right.
And some other things on there as well. And when I met with Ronnie and Mr. Cool this afternoon, we were discussing, we were going over everything that he has on the board, and Mr. Cool is aware of the fact that we probably won't be putting a Public Works Director in place until after the new city manager comes, so it's, you know, possibly going to be a couple of months, but he is willing to help us out, so...
Sounds good, thank you, thank you.
Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any further questions on the change order?
No, I'd like to...
Seeing none, we'll make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the change order for the North Utility Extension for sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and seventy-seven cents.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Passed unanimous.
Thank you. Item number nine, we have additional candidates for the City Manager Selection Committee.
I had inadvertently left off a couple that had applied earlier, such as Bill Jarrett and Tanya Marshall, and then we've also had interest from someone else that Councilmember Sutherland asked us to add, and her name is Samantha Mutusami.
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 And so we just need you to approve those three to be added to the committee.
This would bring the final total to eleven, I believe?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anyone willing to make that motion?
I'll make that motion, and we go ahead and approve the additional members to the City Manager Selection Committee, Bill Jarrett, Tanya Marshall, and Samantha Mutusami.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Item number ten, we have the CDBG mitigation grant. Assuming that's Danielle, or is that Kim?
No, it's me.
All right.
This is the grant I started to tell you about at the last meeting, but I didn't have all of the information at the time.
Okay.
So what I've sent you is what Corbett sent to me, and the highlighted part is him saying that the D.O., D.E.O. is looking for input on program development, and they have sent an online survey, and if, I'll send you the email on email, and then that way, if you guys want to go in and, and participate in the survey, that's kind of what they're looking for, too, and staff will as well. And, but the highlights, in addition to the fact sheet, is all listed here, and in the email, I will send it to you, there's four attachments, and it includes the fact sheets and, and all of the rest of the stuff that goes with it, if you guys want to look at it, because he said that the city does qualify for this, for this grant, so...
This is an additional grant from the CDBG that we already have?
It's additional grant, and it never happens. So he said it's a once-in-a-generation, so it's not anything that's going to be available after this, by the sounds of it.
Okay.
I do know that the LMS, the Local Mitigation Strategy, used to have a board, and I don't know if they meet anymore, but originally, the LMS would designate, and it was a board of the different cities, and the college, and the hospitals, and what they would do is, they would assess all the different buildings in the county that had issues that could potentially be of hurricane, you know, busted-out windows, making things retrofitting them to hurricane standards and whatnot. The fire department, I believe, got some LMS dollars in the past, but they were always used for government buildings, and right here, at the very last bullet point, it says that the government buildings or building used for government activities are not allowable.
Right, I saw that.
So this would be going to the schools, I presume, and all of them, and would it...
Well, I haven't been able to ask him anything further on it, because he was out all last week, but I can give him, get in touch with him tomorrow.
Kim, would it be helpful if, for example, in the future, I know that he has a given update on the current CDBG for housing? If he came and gave us an update on what's going on, so that, because I know there are people, they're calling me, and I know they've been to City Hall as well, trying to find out about that grant, and when they're going to be able to apply?
Okay.
Could he come in and do a presentation on that, and see where we are with it, and explain to the public what the steps are next, and then at the same time, if he can tell us more about this grant, maybe kill two birds with one stone?
Our first meeting in December, perhaps?
Yes, that would be December ninth. You want me to see if I can get him here that day?
If he's available.
Okay, that would be good, that sounds good to me. I'll check in with him.
Very good.
We don't have to do anything for that, then, do we?
Right.
Okay.
All right. Item number eleven, next council meeting date. Kim?
I believe that council has decided we'd have this special meeting tonight, and then our next regular meeting will be on December ninth, and we won't have a meeting on November twenty-fifth. This is the week of Thanksgiving, is that how you guys want to do it?
Yeah, that's, that's what we were talking about, yeah.
Okay, so that's, so then, I just wanted to make sure that you know, the next meeting, the next regular meeting of council will be December ninth at six o'clock.
Very good. Anything else on that?
Will the executive info be on that one, then?
The...
The new contract you're talking about? If the attorneys get it done in time, then I'm sure it will be.
I'm sure they'd like to see that before Christmas.
We can get done, as far as, yes, we can add that to it if, if Mr. Koji gets it back to us, yeah.
Yeah, and I believe the, does the pension board have to also meet on that as well before our next meeting?
I think they probably will, because, yeah, because both things were addressed.
I was just thinking, being Christmas and all, that they would, their raise would be retroactive to October first, that they would want to see that in their first paycheck in December, so the sooner they meet with their people, then the sooner we will be able to do this and get the raise in there.
Yeah.
So it's up to them.
Yeah.
All right. Dave Cornet is here. We will go back to item number five, the Boys and Girls Club event.
First, I'll be following Josh.
Oh, no problem.
And, and she did tell me it was early, so that's all me. Proposal has come to us that I need to bring to you in reference to the brand-new basketball court, which might I thank you, it is wonderful, it's gorgeous. Our director's behind me, and she can tell you a hundred times over how great it is.
Good.
It's nice to have that beautiful shine again. The Heartland Lions play football at the, at the Boys and Girls Club seven, eight times a year. We now have been, the proposal has been brought that the Heartland Racers play basketball eight times, or seven times, a year at our court. They have given me the dates, they are, they have applied for their 501(c)(3) nonprofit, have not received it yet, but they have applied, I did ask that. They have given me their liability insurance that would cover them, and they've given me the dates in which they would like to use the court. That's all they want to use it for, is Saturdays for games. They would be in the, in the arena from five to eleven, one, two, three, four, five, six times. I told them that they were supposed to be here tonight, but the president was leaving I told them that they were supposed to be here tonight, but the president was leaving Orlando an hour ago and could not make it. She was on her way here. I told her, don't, don't bother. Well, I'll cover you. My question to you is the same it is always. I always bring it to you. And let you make a decision that whether that's a good thing or a bad thing, and then we take it from there.
Okay. Questions for Dave?
Well, I, I guess the question is, every other organization that's nonprofit has a contract with the city or some type of an agreement. So there would be an expectation, I would think, that we would have something. Or do we just want them to go in there and use it?
Well, I mean, we set up the Boys and Girls Club basically kind of as the executor, you know, so they're sort of the gatekeeper there. I think the intention is that we would have these organizations come along that would ask to use these facilities. The question that I'm more concerned about is the time, and are we going to have somebody there to watch? To make sure there's no damage to the facilities, security, that sort of thing.
Brand-new floor?
Director's here. We'll, we'll let her speak to that. Her and I have had this conversation. I would rather it come straight from her.
All right.
Good evening, everyone.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I would love for them to have it, because most of the time, that'll keep the kids off the streets. Only majority of the time, they have somewhere to go to entertain them. And this is what we're all about, as a community, to entertain our kids and have them in one place where we can see them basically not being hurt.
They played their first game on Sunday at the college. It was well-attended. I did speak to them about that, and, because our arena was not ready. And the court was not ready for, for use. It probably won't be ready for another week. But it was well-attended, and they did very well. So I told them, we really couldn't help them with practices, which they do practice at one of the local churches, churches. But they could, if, if your permission, they could use the court for games.
Did the college charge them for that? Do you know?
I did not ask, ma'am. I did not ask.
And then they charge to come in? They make money on this?
I'm assuming he asked.
And right now, they are, from my understanding, they are a for-profit organization, even though you say they have applied?
Yeah, I did ask that, because I, you guys have asked me that before, and I always ask that question.
I have no problem with them using it, but however, since they are going to make money off of it, someone needs to pay for security, and I know you are very good security, but you can't watch everybody at the same time. So they would need some security, and also, I would like to see that they pay something for the, the lights and the waters and the insure, I mean, the damage to the building or, or something of that sort.
I'm very open to that, but you know, and you've heard me say a hundred times, we're not here to make money. We're here to help the city recoup anything that they might lose. So if that's something, that's a stipulation, I have no problem. They did ask me that early on, when they first came to me with that proposal. What would you charge us? And I said, that's not a charge I would.
And we never came up with the charge.
It's averaged, it's, you average out the thirty days of the electric bill and cha- charge them prorated for that amount of time that they're in there. The city doesn't make money off of it. We just charge them whatever. We would have paid for that. So someone's going to just have to do some math.
And I would, I would suggest, as, as Councilman Gray said, there would be a security charge, and we would have one of our staff there. And, and we came up with a ten dollar an hour charge, and we paid one of our staff.
Yeah, but one, my concern is still just one person there to watch.
She's always there.
Yeah, I, I understand that.
So they'd be paying for you to be there?
I've got her covered. I've got her covered.
They'd be, okay. But I mean, right?
That would be fine. That would be fine.
I mean, it would, it's up to you. I mean, if you want her to show up and them not pay you for that, then that's up to you. But, you know, if you want to cover her, but, I mean, it's just my thought that if.
And I would. I would like to cover her.
Okay, but in terms of the law enforcement or something, do we just want some big guy out there just standing around, or do you want law enforcement?
Talk to me.
Because I know some, at some of these games, eh, they can get very heated.
We talked about the testosterone.
We can make that, we can make that arrangement. That's not a problem. Lieutenant Tyson has offered that many times. We just make the request through the sheriff's office and have somebody there.
But we won't be paying for now?
Well, no.
No, the city, I mean, we, the city won't be paying for it?
No, no, we would, we would put that into this charge, and that would be the lights and the security.
Okay.
So if they want to pay you to clean up, that's one thing, or if they clean up after themselves, that's another thing? So I mean, all of that has to be coordinated with them, make sure that there's no trash left over. And the other thing is, I know that you want those floors to be immaculate and no food on it, so I mean, if there's concessions and stuff, are you going to allow food inside?
Will not be. Will not be. That's one of the things we have talked about, and we will not let any juice or any of that stuff on the floors. No, not even close.
They're going to have.
It does look nice. I hope you all get a chance. We're going to have a grand opening.
I've been behind there, but y'all was, wasn't, no one wasn't there, so.
Well, we're going to have a grand opening in December. We're going to bring all of you over or invite you over. Cut a big cake, do the whole things.
Are you going to have food inside?
Not inside. Not inside. We, we have, we have a line. It's already been, the, the, the kids can't even eat in there. The kids can't come close to it. We, we truly want to, it to be a representation of the city, and that's, that's what it's supposed to be.
Okay. They have event insurance, I'm assuming?
Yes, they do. You need to see it?
I, I don't need to see it. I just make sure.
As long as the city's, what is it, as, we are as additional insured on their policy. A million dollars, I think the coverage typically is. So what are the hours?
Uh, games are from five to eleven.
So they'll want to get there early and change and all that?
It's an evening, but.
Okay.
And I can, I can help. We, we can, we can make all that happen. That's not the problem. I just needed to make sure you guys were okay with it. We, we don't have issues with the semi-pro football team. I think a lot of that is Adrian and the way she operates it. She does a great job. From what I've gotten from this organization, they seem to be tight and, and together. I will stop by the, the college this week and see how that went, and make sure they didn't have any issues. I'll speak to their staff. But it's important that you all give the thumbs up, and if it's not, and it's a thumbs down, we, we move forward.
Yeah. Now, I mean, given the circumstances, I, I don't have a problem with it.
I don't have a problem.
What was the first date that they want to use it? December what?
I was worried about you there, Ms. Gray.
Yeah, I thought she was, yeah.
What is the first date that they want to use this?
Um, it would be the end of November, twenty-third.
So they'll be advertising it and all of that, and?
And I can, I can leave this with you there. It's their, it's their date, so you guys don't have to.
And what is the age group of these men? Eighteen to twenty-five?
Do you know how many of the kids are local? Pretty much all of them, you think? And then all their families go? Hmm?
Couple of our city employees.
Really? Okay.
Can they play?
You know something? It's funny you say that, because I, when I asked them today, did you guys win to the, to the president, she said overwhelmingly. So I don't know who they play. They play the high school team. I don't know, but they won very well. So if, if you guys are good with that, I'll try to put together some.
Guidelines?
Yes, and I'll get that over to you, so you at least have it.
Excellent.
And, and in those guidelines, we'll figure out that, that number that you're talking about, and that will be their charge. And it'd be that simple. Again, it's not for us. It's to cover those three things that you said. Lights and, and electricity and the, the two staff. That's it.
Very good.
Okay.
Anything else?
I'm good.
I have one more thing, and this is a simple one. I just got asked today by a group, Move Beyond Incorporated, want to do a walkathon on March the seventh around the track. I didn't think you'd have any issue with that.
No.
Okay. They're, they're associated with DJJ and a few others. I mean, these are reputable groups. I spoke with their group today, and they're going to.
How many people do they expect?
A hundred. That's one thing I have to.
So you'll have to open up the gym for the restrooms and all that?
Don't know. I, I may have them bring out porta pucks. That may be the easier way, but.
What organization is the walk, a walkathon for?
Uh, oh, a multiple sclerosis.
Oh, yeah, they called me about that. They asked me to walk, yeah.
And I did have them make me this, you can keep that too. I said, are your flyers up yet? And she said, no, it's in March, but I'll make you one, just so you have.
Thank you.
Are they going to have to have insurance as well?
Uh, I'm going to give them the same ones I gave to this. She said she'll take care of it.
I think we have to be consistent with all of that.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. I think that's the only way I do.
So you have a calendar of everything going on over there, so if anyone else wants to do it, you've got it. Okay, all right.
Yeah.
I trust you.
Well, I mean, I would just say, thank you, Dave. I mean, you guys do a heck of a job there, and we're.
Really, thank you. And I, I hope you all plan to come out to the, very quick, have a piece of cake, look at the, the court. It, it really does look very nice. I'm, I'm extremely pleased, and this one is keeping the kids off it the way they're supposed to be. If you don't have tennis shoes on, don't go near it.
Okay, good.
Very good.
You're good?
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We have an event application from the Calvario City Church. If you'll come up, please. Please give your name and address for the record.
Delia Alacia, five oh seven Shaw Street.
Very good. This is for, the name of the event is the Three Kings Community Outreach, and you want to give us a little bit of outline of what the event will be?
The event is an outreach for the kids from kindergarten to twelve years. And then, um, we offer that they're going to get gifts, and they're going to have a show for the kids. They just have hot dogs, hamburgers, presents at the end.
Okay. And this event is going to be, going to be held at Donaldson Park?
Yes.
So they're requesting the use of Donaldson Park. They do have their five oh one C three status. They have their insurance requirements taken care of. Is there any questions about this event?
So what are they, what they, what are they asking from us?
Well, they want the park, so we have to approve the park use for them, so.
On January the fourth?
Yeah.
That's from nine AM to two PM.
And it's a total community thing? There's no private vendors out there or anything? Nothing, just all? Are you looking to look for the parks, for the fees to be waived?
Well, if you do it, that would be great, but eh, we're just looking for it, because the previous year, when we tried to do it, was denied like three or four days before.
Oh.
Yeah, they had applied, and they were told that they had to apply longer than six months out. Instead of just simply letting them come to the council, they, they denied them outright.
Well, I'm all for it, and I'm all for them having the, I mean, you have your, your five oh one C three designation and all. I mean, what is it, seventy-five dollars to rent the entire park? I think that we could waive that. You guys just have to clean up after yourselves, and it's just the usual, you know, you leave it the way you found it. Hopefully, you'll find it really nice. But, um, and you have your insurance, you said, right?
Yes.
How many people are you expecting?
We usually have like a hundred kids, about a hundred kids from here.
And they're on vacation then, aren't they, still after school? So you're going to have a lot of people on vacation?
Yeah, and they'll be accompanied by parents.
Probably be born this time, because we have the park.
Yeah. Very good. Is there any further questions on it?
Nope, I'm good.
Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Do you have bounce houses, by the way?
No.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'll for it. I'm, I don't know, I'll make a motion if you want. I'll, I'll make a motion that we accept Calvario City Church for an event to be held on January the fourth, two thousand and twenty, at Donaldson Park with the, uh, park fees waived for this event.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Very good.
So you're going to have hot dogs and hamburgers? What other, is that all? No Alcapurrias or anything like that?
Maybe posole.
Okay, good. Thank you.
All right. Last thing is the city manager's report.
Okay, Mr. Cool is here, in case anybody on the council has any questions for him. If you do, he'd be happy to come up and answer them, otherwise, we can let him go home.
Questions in regards to the projects that he's going to be working on with the city?
To the projects, to the projects of the public works.
Okay, I do have some questions, if that's okay.
Once again, this will be Carl Cool with Cool and Cobb Engineering.
Okay, so are you going to, is he going to inherit? Are you going to inherit the, the grants that are pending right now, and you're going to be doing the reviews of those as well? I mean, is he going to have the final say on all of that as well, and bring them to council for approval, or how is that going to work?
Well.
I mean, you're just stepping in as an interim.
Yes, ma'am.
Guy, right? So you'll have keys to the office?
As a C, eh, somebody is inspecting the project and the work, we have to put together the final completion and as-built, and each monthly pay request comes to me anyhow, so that's, nothing changes about that. But there are some times that there are questions that need to be asked about restraints on pipe, as an example. And so I would be working with your staff, not as their supervisor, but I will be available if they have a question. I would meet with them. I'm out there a couple of times a day anyhow, looking at the work that's being done, taking pictures. But like on the North Central Avenue, I got with Danielle to make sure we got all of the closeout documents squared away to get the grant completed and closed out in accordance with the, the state requirements. I'll be doing that too on this pipe project.
So in regards to the other streets and stuff that are getting done, because there are some streets being paved here or there, or at least are in the budget? I mean, are we going to hold off on that until the next person comes in, or?
I think we should.
Okay, so, but if there are any other issues, what happens if we have some issues with the utility in terms of the sewer system or something? I mean, will that end up being another consultant to do that?
Well, we, we still have the water plant, wastewater plant, and water plant supervisor out there who goes, that's his responsibilities and stuff.
And he'll be reporting to you in the meantime?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and so will, and that's Rick Reed, and then Robert Trevino will be doing streets and sanitation, what he's always been doing, and he'll report to me as well.
So vacation and stuff like that, they'll be coming to you, not to Carl? He won't have to do any of the admin stuff internally?
No, he won't have to do any of that, no.
Right, if they get out there and they have a drainage problem, and they're not sure what to do, they may call me, and I'll meet them out there.
Okay. Well, I know you're flexible as well, and that's really what it requires, right?
But as far as the admin stuff.
And we're here, so we didn't very, we don't have to go for a long ways to get there.
Okay.
And then I'm, like on the pipe project, I'm going to be out there a couple of times a day anyhow. And I'm meeting with your staff and, and discussing the project as it goes anyhow. And we're, we're communicating. They tell me what they see. I tell them what I see. So we're working together as a team, inspecting the pipeline project as it goes.
Okay, and just to soothe the confidence for the community, you are, you are an engineer?
I'm a licensed engineer since nineteen seventy-six.
Right, and you were the county engineer for how long?
I was assistant county engineer for five years. I was county engineer for seven. I was public works director for three. Then I was county administrator for seventeen.
Okay.
So, so I was, I've been a public works director and been county engineer, uh, with the county engineering department. So I know roads, I know road design, I know drainage issues, uh, and know water and sewer. So, so if we run into something, and I know where the resources are, if there's a question, that's over my head. That's important, to know where I can go get the, the answers if I don't know the answers.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cool. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it, Carl. What else you got, Kim?
Danielle has something to share.
Um, at the last meeting, you received the tactical games, um, request for use of, uh, city property. And I suggested the old Samuel Pool hangar, um, since it's not occupied. I reached out to DOT. Uh, DOT has no objections to it if the city will allow it. It's only for one day. Their training is week-long, but they only want the actual facility for one day to perform their, um, exercise.
Yeah.
So if council approves, I'll allow them to use the pool hangar.
I have no objection.
Neither do I.
Okay.
Okay, I have a, just a couple of things.
Yep.
And, um, well, Brenda left, and I was going to give her an update on the Hal McRae. Anyway. Uh, the person that owns that property, the Hal McRae demo that she's been asking about?
Yes.
He won't respond to anyone, but his brother is going to be here in December, and he will let Eric Longshore, the building official, he will let him into the house so that he can see if it needs to be demoed. So until then, we're really not going to be able to do anything, because we can't get in. But he, he said he will, when he gets here, let him in.
Okay.
So we can maybe move forward at that point with that.
Does he have a letter from the brother allowing him to do that?
I think that they're both owners on the property, so.
That, that's for Eric Longshore to worry about.
Okay.
Yeah, but also, I just wanted to let you know that, um, you know that we have an, um, a vacant spot on the CRA advisory board. Rick Hayes would like to fill that spot, so we'll have him come to the next meeting, um, and we'll get a bio and stuff from him. I think you all probably know him.
Yep, and that was for which position?
For the CRA advisory board. Galen had to resign.
So as long as he's within any of the CRA districts, whether it be a business or a resident, then he's eligible to be on that advisory board. If he's not, then he can't.
Okay.
So you'll have to check the address and make sure that he's in.
Okay, and, um.
And he'd be the Main Street side, right?
I don't know.
I don't know.
Yeah, there's three for Main Street. He would be representing, because that's how it works. You've got two from the airport, two from South Side, and then you've got three from the Main Street.
Okay.
That's how your comp is, so.
What, what vacancies are on the CRA advisory?
He's taking a Main Street vacancy.
That's the only vacancy?
That's the only one.
Yeah, there is only one, so if it's Main Street, yeah.
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 You just look it up, and he'll, he'll, you'll know.
Okay. And then I do want to make it public. A short while ago, I received an, an email from Ronnie Jones stating that he would be willing to stay on with the city with a ten percent wage increase and no interference from the council while he does his job. I just wanted to make that public, and, um, so council can do whatever they want with that, so.
Yeah, I'll just say, I'm, you know, I'm sad to see Mr. Jones leave. I think he did a fantastic job. I think he was a, a great for the City of Avon Park, and I would love to do whatever we could to keep him. I don't think that, uh, it's probably going to be a realistic request, uh, for the council to be uninvolved more than they already have. So realistically, I don't see how that could possibly go forward, even though I would be more than willing to agree.
I feel the same too. I, I would like to see him stay, but I think that, uh, under the circumstances, that, um, I don't think his request would be favorable to all members of this council, so. I'd just like to say thank you for the service. I think we were glad to have him. I did. I know I trusted him. I thought, I trusted his opinion, and, uh, just, uh, give him, give him our thanks.
And my sentiments are the same.
Okay.
As both of them.
Anything else, Kim?
That's all I have. Thank you. I thank you all very much.
Is there anything else for the good of the city?
One last thing.
Go ahead.
In regards to the truck requests that were submitted, or at least requested by Ronnie? You know, would it be possible to find out specifically who or what employee positions he was looking for these? Are they replacements of trucks or brand-new trucks? I'm just curious as to, you know, the number of employees that would need them. Are these take-home vehicles or just vehicles for the city?
I can get more information on that. I know that, um, I know that Rick Reed does not have a vehicle. He's driving his own truck, um, for. a vehicle, he's driving his own truck, um, for city work, and I know that Ronnie doesn't have a city vehicle either, he's leaving, so I don't know where that-
Where'd all the trucks go?
I don't know, I-
Public auction a couple of years ago.
And Roberts got one that was in the accident that the attorneys won't release because they're preserving the evidence and they won't release it to be fixed, so it's sitting there doing nothing.
The attorneys.
The attorneys for the person who was, was in the accident with him, so.
Is this the one that we just signed the settlement agreement for?
No, it's a different one.
So I guess it would be helpful just to have an inventory then, because you've got code enforcement with a bunch of trucks and some of those are brand-new.
Right, right.
So those got traded in, old ones got traded in, or?
No, they were the Durangos that were kinda driving around now, like the city manager's vehicle.
Well, then you know what, I think an inventory list would be appropriate and then just kinda see where we are with everything. You're saying that one of the city hall cars is being used by somebody, but I can't see a utility guy driving a Ford Escape.
He did.
Well, no, and there is, there's an, they, they're using the Ford Escape out there because it wasn't being used, and also the vehicle that the city manager was using is not being used, but it doesn't do them any good because they need actual, you know, heavier utility vehicles than that, so.
Okay.
I, I know there is-
Do an inventory.
Yeah, and I, I know there is some money that's budgeted in some machinery and equipment line items for the water fund. Um, it was mentioned as far as, um, the money moving to contingency and sanitation, that's sanitation. If, if they're needing public works vehicles, they're most likely coming from the water fund, so I'll look into see the details on these light items to find out if trucks were actually budgeted for those.
Very good.
Okay.
Anything else?
I have one comment. I noticed, uh, recently that we have our Christmas signs up on Main Street, and they look fantastic, but I also noticed that, uh, we don't really have any really close to Highway twenty-seven. We have like six right here towards the end, near city hall, which I understand, and I know we also picked certain areas where we're gonna